Good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock. I'd like to welcome you all to the Richland County Council Regular Session for March 21st, 2023. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll? Oh, almost forgot, this meeting will come to order.
Brenham.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Teresa.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Walker.
Present.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton. Here. We have a quorum.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda is Item 2, which is the invocation that will be given by the Honorable Jessica Mackey. Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, the Honorable Gretchen Barron will be delivering the invocation.
Recognize Ms. Barron.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day, God. We thank you that this is the day that you've made and we're rejoicing and we're glad in it. Now, God, as we've gathered into this chamber, we invite you in, in order for us to conduct business of Richland County. We thank you, God, that we think at another level, therefore, we operate at another level so that the people of Richland County will be blessed by the decisions that we make. In Jesus's name, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Next item on the agenda is Item 4, Presentation of Proclamations. And the Clerk has brought to my attention this evening that, well, two things. Number one, since we have three proclamations, we're going to wait until, you know, all proclamations have been read, you know, prior to posing for the photo op. And secondly, with respect to Item 4A, the proclamation recognizing the life of local activist Kevin Alexander Gray, it's my understanding that is now a resolution, considering that there is unanimous support for the proclamation. So, in light of the fact that it is a resolution, it will require a vote, so at this time, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you. Moved appropriately. Second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Right, and proclamation, ma'am. Will be, Ms. Black, you're recognized.
All right. A resolution recognizing the life and legacy of activist Kevin Alexander Gray. Whereas Kevin Alexander Gray was born in Boston, Massachusetts on July 1st, 1957, before moving to Spartanburg, South Carolina, where he and his sister were among the first African-American students that integrated in elementary school in 1968. And whereas Mr. Gray graduated from Paul D. Norman High School, Watford College, and worked on his doctoral degree in political science at the American University, he also served as a second compact command in Company C-391 Engineers Compact Corp., United States Reserve, in the 18, 1980s. And whereas, at a young age, Mr. Gray was involved in community activism. In 1986, he was the founding member of the National Rainbow Coalition and co-founder of the Southern Rainbow Education Project. Mr. Gray was the South Carolina Coordinator for the Presidential Campaign for Jesse Jackson and the Southern Political Director for the President Campaign of Senator Tom Harkin and the U.S. Senate Campaign for Tom Clement. And whereas Mr. Gray was nationally and internationally politically involved in working on issues ranging from third-world politics, racial politics, police violence, unions, workers' rights, grassroots politics, and marches. He was an organizer for the Rainbow Push Coalition Anti-Proposition Nine marches in San Francisco and Sacramento, California. Whereas Mr. Gray has published editorial works and authored books such as "The Decline of Black Politics: From Al Capone to Barack Obama" and "Waiting for Light to Strike", as well as frequent panelists for Rev. Jack C. Jackson's Sunday Radio Broadcast. He used many different platforms to highlight political policies and educate. Mr. Gray opened up the Railwood Barbecue in 2020. The restaurant showcases life's works and advocacy with newspaper clippings, yard signs, articles, and pictures from his own personal collection. Whereas Mr. Gray leaves behind his wife Sandra N. Gray, two children, Brian Gray and Camille Gray Felder, eight grandchildren and two great-grandchildren, a community and a community that positively was affected by his life and actions. Now, there be it fore resolved that Richland County Councilmember Jason Brandon, Derek Pew, Yvonne L. McBride, Paul Livingston, Allison Teresa, Don Weaver, Gretchen Barron, Overture Walker, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton recognize the life and works of Mr. Alexander Gray. His life of educating and dedication to the citizens of Richland County and beyond will not be forgotten. Thank you.
You recognize Councilman Pew?
First, I want to thank my colleagues for seeing fit for us to make sure that this was a resolution and not just a proclamation. Kevin Gray was a pillar of our community, a walking history book, and an outstanding businessman. And as I recall, you know, I could never go into his restaurant without having, without sitting down and learning some type of history or him telling us, him telling me what us at Richland County Council should be doing to better what's going on across the street. And so, with that being said, I just want to thank everybody for seeing fit to make sure that we recognize him in the proper way.
Item on the agenda is Item 4B, Proclamation Recognizing the Retirement of Brenda J. Dial. And that proclamation has been sponsored by the Honorable Yvonne McBride.
The Chair.
You recognize Ms. McBride?
It's my honor to have a proclamation recognizing the outstanding work of Brenda J. Dial. At this time, Ms. Black will read the proclamation. Mr. Chair.
A proclamation recognizing the retirement of Brenda J. Dial. Where Ms. Brenda J. Dial joined the Richland County Clerk of Court Office in 1985 in the Finance Department, she would become the Account Supervisor. And within her 37 years of service, Ms. Dial has seen many changes to the office and court system. The most prominent change was the introduction of computers. And whereas Ms. Dial will be remembered as the Queen of Christmas, Ms. Dial made many friends, friendships end with employees, attorneys, and supervisors. Those people have forever touched her life, and she has touched theirs as well. And whereas upon her retirement, she will be found in her happy place, which is under the flower garden that surrounds her home and sometimes her neighbors' yards, or traveling to see family and friends. Now be for, now there be fore proclaimed that Richland County Councilmember Yvonne L. McBride recognizes the retirement of Ms. Brenda J. Dial and think her for her 37 years of service to the citizens of Richland County.
Next item on the agenda is Item 4C, A Proclamation Recognizing March as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month. That proclamation has been sponsored by the Honorable Jessica Mackey, the Honorable Yvonne McBride, and the Honorable Cheryl English. And I believe Ms. Black will be reading the proclamation. Ms. Black, you're recognized.
A proclamation recognizing March as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month. Whereas the designation will firmly and expand upon the federal designation 36 years ago on March 1986 as hemophilia awareness month, and in 2016, when the entirety of the bleeding disorder community came together to encompass all bleeding disorders. And whereas the Federal Department of Health and Human Resources designated March 2016 as National Bleeding Disorder Month. And these bleeding disorders, which share the inability to form a proper blood clot, are characterized by extended bleeding after injury, surgery, trauma, or menstruations can lead to significant morbidity and can be fatal and not treated effectively. Whereas many individuals with hemophilia become infected with HIV and sepsis in the 1980s due to contamination of the blood supply and blood products. And this Awareness Month in Richland County will generate greater awareness and understanding for not only hemophilia but all inheritable bleeding disorders, including von Wylde's Men's Disease, a rare bleeding disorder which affects millions of individuals around the world. And whereas the Awareness Month will bring light to the great significant achievements in the treatment of blood disorders for which there is no cure, the greater pursuit of advanced therapies and cures to all these disorders. Whereas the bleeding disorder community relationship with policymakers have fostered numerous medical policies and advancement beneficial to all of those affected by bleeding diseases and their loved ones. Whereas the Awareness Month will foster a greater sense of community and shared purpose among individuals with inheritable bleeding disorders. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Richland County Councilmembers Jason Brandon, Yvonne L. McBride, Allison Teresa, Gretchen Barron, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English hereby do proclaim March 2023 as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month in Richland County, South Carolina. Thank you.
Now, it's time for the photo op. So if we have anyone present on behalf of Mr. Kevin Gray, they can come on down and then we can begin to, also can, or the seal.
Is there anyone from Kevin Gray family that will be receiving the proclamation tonight? No? Okay.
to acknowledge our, you know, Clerk of Court, the Honorable Ms. Jenette McBride. And my apologies, Ms. McBride, for not acknowledging you at the outset of the meeting.
Okay.
Charging to my head, not my heart. some outlets did show it.
There you go.
I don't want to take up too much of y'all's time.
Absolutely.
I did want to say thank you. This is my son Grady, he's seven. My son Logan's five. Logan has severe hemophilia A. He was diagnosed at seven months. Because of awareness like this for the decades and generations before us, it's made his life as close to normal as possible. So, we thank y'all. We've been here a couple of years. It's good to see this. I appreciate the support. On behalf of, we're also with Bleeding Disorders Association of South Carolina. It's a community of people that are impacted with bleeding disorders. We have 37 families in the county of Richland, and on behalf of them, I want to say thank y'all for recognition, so, thank you so much.
You recognize Ms. McBride?
May I take?
Yes, you may.
I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Dr. McNeely, who's the president of Allen University. He's with us. Allen University is a historical black college that's been in Richland County for over 150-something years. But thank you, Dr.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Next item on the agenda is Item 5, Presentation. It's Item 5A, Conservation Commission, rather, Fiscal Year 23, 24 Annual Plan. So if you would please come to the podium and just state your name, the agency which you're representing. You will have five minutes, and remember to please refrain from asking for money.
I'm Chair of the Richland County Conservation Commission, and Conservation Division staff members Quitneps and John McKenzie are here, as well as Assistant County Administrator Rick Jensen to help answer any questions. Okay, you could, if you could go forward a slide? Okay, yeah. So, the Conservation Commission was created by ordinance in 1998. We have 11 commissioners, each appointed by a council member, and we promote the county's natural, historical, and cultural resources and promote nature-based recreation and eco and heritage tourism. We create studies and planning documents to help us in our mission, and some of these include the Lower Richland Tourism Plan, the Richland County Cemetery Survey, Richland County Historical Resources, and a couple others I'll mention later in the talk. Yeah. I do stutter, so there may be an occasional pause. Next slide, please. Okay. Most of our funding is through a half-mill special revenue fund, and one of our projects is our Conservation Commission Grants Program, which awards $250,000 a year toward historic preservation and natural resources projects. Next slide. Another small program is the Historic Markers Program, and we typically fund a couple of historic markers a year. Next slide. We use that half-mill special revenue fund to monitor existing conservation easements and to evaluate potential easements as well as acquire them. Next slide. All right. Our strategies for acquisition are guided by one, by a study that we commissioned through Richland County's GIS Department, and we identified five priority watersheds as well as the Quasi Basin for both conservation easements and land acquisition. One big project in fiscal year 2022 is the acquisition of a 60-acre Cabin Branch tract that adjoins the county's much larger 600-acre set of parcels along Cabin Branch. We, in terms of land management, besides the half-mill special revenue fund, we also rely on the general fund transfer in of $144,000 each year. The money that's not spent from the general fund transfer in, and this won't be the only time I say this today, is returned to the council's general fund at the end of the fiscal year. And that money is used for management of approximately 3,800 acres of land that the Richland County Council owns, including Mill Creek and Cabin Ranch. Big projects this year included, well, last year actually, included the Mill Creek Bridge replacement, and we have an agreement with Columbia Rowing Club to make improvements to the Broad River, the Broad River Road docks and add some fishing docks. Next slide. One of our big projects over the past couple of years has been the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. Our goal is to finally have it added to the county's comprehensive plan this upcoming year. We're in the, we're in the very final stages of that. And as a reminder, with the Lower Richland Tourism Plan, once that's implemented, large projects over $100,000 will all have to come before the council for approval. Next slide. Besides approval of the Lower Richland Tourism Plan, we hope to, or we hope to begin implementation. We also had a four-stewardship plan put together for us a couple of years ago. We went to start implementing that. Of course, we've been working on the heritage. Of course, we've been working on the heritage tourism marketing plan this year. And implementation should begin by fiscal year '24. That project was initiated and will be partially implemented by hospitality tax funds from the county. And then if you look at our plans, if you look at our plans, you see they're based mostly on natural resources. And we really don't have a plan for protection of historic and cultural resources. And so we would like to move forward with putting together a historic preservation plan. Next slide. Okay, this just shows fiscal year 2024. We will not be spending the full $250,000 on conservation grants. We just had fewer applications this year than we do, than we have historically. Next and last slide. Now, this shows our expenditures over recent years. There's been some underspending due to staff vacancies. Staff vacancies funded from the general fund transfer in are of course returned to the general fund. Others are turned over into our special revenue fund balance, which funds projects in later years. Recent large projects have included $250,000 for the Mill Creek Bridge design project and $305,000 for that 60-acre Cabin Branch property purchase. And that should be, I think the next one's a thank you slide, just to check. Okay, and are there any questions?
Grego, thank you for what is a very informative, as well as edifying, our presentation. You went over by a minute and a half, but I won't, I won't count it. But yes, since you put so much time into this, so I thought I would just give you just a smidge of grace. All right, but certainly thank you for the work that you, as well as the fine folks over at the Conservation Commission perform on behalf of the residents of Richland County. You recognize Councilman Weaver?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd just like to say, John, thank you again for your work. It was a pleasure mine to recommend your reappointment for my predecessor, Greg Pierce, who originally put you on this position. And I've only heard good things from the community about all the work you're doing. So thank you on behalf of conservation in Richland County.
No, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item 6, Approval of the Minutes. This is from the regular session for March 7, 2023. Any changes, additions, or deletions? Heard someone say, Mr. Chair. You recognize Ms. English?
Thank you, sir. On page one of the agenda where it says Point of Personal Privilege, I would like that to reflect that I wanted the Disability Awareness Month to be reflected in March. March is Disability Awareness Month. Thank you.
Ms. English, I'm assuming you're referring to the minutes of the March. Right, the Point of Personal Privilege from the March 7th?
Yes, sir.
Meeting in 2023?
Yes.
Okay, so noted. Any additional additions or changes or deletions to the March 7th Agenda Minutes? You recognize Ms. Barron?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just want to go on the record again just to make sure that when we are taking our minutes, that we include all the details of the discussion. I think it's very important for the body to communicate to our constituents, our constituencies base, to make sure that they know exactly what we're talking about. We're giving headlines in our minutes, and that's not what minutes are designed for. They're really designed to give the meat of the conversation so that those who are reading them will understand fully what's going on during our meetings. Thank you.
Aaron, any changes, additions, or additional deletions to the minutes from the March 7, 2023 meeting? There being none, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Oh, move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Kingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item 7, Adoption of the Agenda. Any changes, additions, or deletions to tonight's agenda? You recognize Ms. Barron?
Thank you. I'd like to request that we could amend the agenda to include, under the report for the Rules and Appointments Committee, to add under Item 19B, an advertisement for the airport vacancy, the airport commission, I'm sorry, the Airport Commission's vacancy.
Okay, and you like that numbered, Ms. Barron, as B10?
Yes, please.
Okay, so that's the Airport Commission vacancy. And how many vacancies, Ms. Barron?
Here's one.
Okay. Note it. Any additional additions or amendments to tonight's agenda? Mr. Brown, Mr. County Attorney, just making sure. Go on once, go on twice. All right. Entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item 8, The Report of the Attorney, County Attorney, rather, for Executive Session Items. We have Item 8A, which is Allen University Property Requests, 1741 Cushman Drive, Columbia, South Carolina 29203, and also 8B Project Charlie Echo. Mr. Wright, any of those items involve outside counsel this evening?
They do not, and both are under Section 30-4-70, Subsection A 2 for A, and Subsection A 2 and 5 for B.
See, Subsection A. Okay, well, here's my next question for you, Mr. Wright. I know that under the County Administrator's Report, Item 8A is also, you know, Item 11A1, but that's Allen University. So do we need to go into executive session now? Or I guess could we just, for information, just hear from Mr. Brown and then go into executive session now afterwards? Or later in the meeting?
We would probably need to go into executive session prior to his report.
All right. Well, entertain a motion for executive session?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second. And this, and Mr. Pugh, that motion is respect to item 8A and 8B, correct? All right, it's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Madam Clerk, I'm going to vote no, but it's because I'm recusing myself from Item 8B, and we weren't able to separate it.
Thank you. English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're in executive session.
Maintain a motion.
Executive session.
Second.
Move to property second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote please.
Brenham.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Record reflect.
Sorry.
Oh, you recognize now, Mr. P.
Sir, I just want the record to reflect that I did not attend the executive session as it pertains to Allen University acquiring a property.
Thank you, Mr. P. And also let the director reflect that we went into executive session regarding items eight A and eight B pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy. We went into executive session just to receive legal advice and also receive information on those two items, and no action was taken. Next item on the agenda is item nine, citizens input, item nine A, for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing, Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have several individuals that have signed up to speak this evening. I'd ask that when I call your name, if you would, come to the front microphone on either side and state your first and last name as well as your address. You'll be given two minutes to speak. Once the timer notifies that your time has ran out, we ask that you please end your remarks at that time. Item nine A on the agenda is for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. And so this item does state for items on the agenda. So several folks signed up tonight, they did not specify the agenda item. So I would ask when I call your name, if you come up, if you would, please start by saying which agenda item you are speaking to so that I am, our clerk can notate the record and we'll follow the rules. All right, so first up is, and one other note, I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. Number one is Pam Selkenhaus.
Hey, good evening, I'm Pam Selkenhaus residing at nineteen forty-four Marina Road, and this is in response to eleven A two. In order to prevent massive rezoning confusion and possible federal lawsuits involving takings claims, the text amendments to the LDC need to be approved first or at the same time as the map is adopted.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry Pam, excuse me, just one minute, I just want to clarify. So item eleven two, the land development code, just for clarification, will this item have a public hearing? And this is for the attorney?
Yes.
So technically, this is your sign up to speak for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. The land code will have a public hearing, and that's what we would ask individuals to speak at that time at the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, we have one, two, three, we have, I believe, four others signed up, again with no agenda item, so if others are signed up to speak on eleven A two, there will be a public hearing for that, and that would be the best time to speak. So I'll call your name, and if it's other than the land code, please come forward. Kim Murphy.
Ms. Mackey. Um, Mr. Chair, Ms. Vice Chair, may I be recognized really quickly, just for the benefit of the audience?
Ah, yes, Ms. Newton.
I saw some people shaking their heads when Ms. Mackey mentioned that there is a public hearing, so for, for information, the information that's on our agenda tonight regarding the land development code is only for information, so there aren't any votes that are taking place about it tonight, it is only an update. But because it is an ordinance, it does require three here, three readings and a public hearing, which would have to happen either to adopt the maps or to amend the text. So I saw some people shaking their hands when they were like, there is a public hearing. It is not tonight. Again, no action is scheduled on our agenda for the land development code. It is strictly for us to receive information. I don't know if that's helpful to people in the audience who are listening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newton.
Um, thank you, my concerns are related to the LDC schedule and some background information leading up to it.
What item is that on the agenda?
That's the land development code schedule that is, that you're being asked to approve, and I, I think the first speaker was talking about the schedule as well, and that we feel, I just have some background information related to that.
Adam Chair, Mr. Chair. I believe that, I believe that item is under, again, items for information, that's a part of the attachment to the administrator's report, which is not asking for council action at this time.
Will the council be voting on this schedule so we can have a public comment on it?
Brown, will the proposed schedule, would that require a vote from council? The proposed schedule just communicates what staff believes council should consider going forward, that's why you're going to have it in your packet as information, so at a future time you can consider and give feedback on what dates and times might actually work for, for you, that's why it's information ahead of time. Does not require your vote? It does not require a vote.
So in order for the administration to move forward, you don't need to approve their schedule, and if we don't agree with their schedule that the text amendments should come first, along with the map versus the map first? Can we offer any input that way?
If I may, Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Murphy, is my understanding from hearing from the administrator, this is just a proposed schedule and, and in essence, he's asking, he's asking council to, at some point, let him know what works for us, and in essence, that's, that's what the ask is, he's, so this is information he's providing tonight, and at some point council would notify him as to availability, if you will, so.
So there won't be a vote on the schedule?
No ma'am, there would not be, no ma'am, there would not be a vote on the schedule, he's not asking for that.
So we can, I guess, communicate with you individually, I guess, let you know that we want the text amendments approved first or along with the map, not the map approved first.
Well, Ms. Murphy, I don't have any additional information to provide you, but, but thank you for your enthusiasm.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Ah, you recognize, Mr. Wright?
And just, just to make it clear to everyone, the text for the twenty twenty-one LDC was approved on November twenty twenty-one, that is complete, is done. The only thing that's not done at this point are the maps to match the text that was approved.
Whoa, 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 wait, 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 the, what, wait, wait, that is not the way we do business in this chamber. We do things in decency and we do things in order. If we're going to have hecklers in the audience, I would ask you to leave the chamber immediately if you can't comport yourselves. Continue on, Mr. Wright.
What the law is, is that the maps have to, the maps were separate, so it could have been done at the same time, they were done separately. So the maps have to match the text that has already been approved. Once both of those are done, then there can be amendments to the, the code. But at this point, the text has already been approved, has been approved for almost a year and a half. The maps have not been approved, so once the maps are approved, then the text can be adjusted. But at this point, the text is not really at question because until the maps are completed to match the text that has already been approved.
But again, Mr. Wright, tonight, all we're doing is receiving an update from the administrator as, with respect to, I guess, you know, the zoning map, or at least where we are, and this proposed schedule, which at some point in the very near future, council will have to determine if what's been presented to us, if that's workable for us as a body regarding this schedule, but no vote occurs tonight.
Right, that's correct, and there will be, there will be a public hearing when the maps come up for your vote.
Right, a public hearing when the maps come up for our vote, not a public hearing on the schedule.
Right.
Because I think that's what sort of be an interpretation here, that there's going to be a vote taken on a schedule that has been proposed, and that is not the case.
Right, it's for the maps, not the schedule.
All right, thank you. Madam Vice Chair, my apologies for that, you have the floor again.
Problem, thank you. So it appears the remaining individuals have signed up in relation to the schedule and zoning, and so if that is for item, land development code eleven A two, there will be a public hearing for those items, it'll have three readings and a public hearing, and at that point would be the time to sign up to speak on those items. Mr. Chair, that concludes that agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is item ten, citizens input. This must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, we have seven individuals. The first is Unique Spain. And if you would, please state your first and last name as well as your address, and you're given two minutes to speak.
Good evening, my name is Unique Spain, my address is nineteen ninety-six Wayside Drive. I actually reside in Orangeburg County, and y'all have to forgive me, I'm a little nervous right now. Um, my concern is the Alvin S. Glenn Detention Center. I have been speaking about the detention center since the videos came out on social media. I have spoken with Mr. Brown, Mr. Harvey, and I am aware now that there is a committee that is dedicated just to that. However, I feel as though we as citizens, for family members who have people back there, we have a different perspective than you guys all receive, and I feel like there would be more input if there were some community involvement, not just simply council members. I am appreciative that you guys have dedicated a committee to that because the conditions are deplorable, the treatment is horrible. These are, you label them inmates, but they're still people. And if some, if I treated an animal the way that some of these people are treated, I would need an attorney because I'd be in jail. So I don't feel like it should be okay for them to be treated that way. They're not eating properly, they're not getting proper medical treatment, they don't have the proper outreach that they need. So I'm hoping that at this point with this new committee, that there can be some changes implemented. But I would also ask that somehow, some way, if I could be an integral part of a, a community liaison, a middleman between council and inmates, because since I've been speaking out on this publicly, I've had so many people reach out to me via Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, emails with the same concerns. And at the end of the day, we just simply want these people to be treated like people. It's horrible when I call up there to get questions and COs are nasty and rude, so only imagine how they're talking and treating to them if they're just handling me like I'm nobody. So again, I do thank you for your time this evening, and I hope that my input is regarded.
Thank you so much. Uh, next up is Jeff B. Craft.
Jeff B. Craft, eighty-four Westridge Road, that's the Pontiac area, I'm with Our Place of Hope. Thank you for what y'all do for our county. Nine out of ten Americans believe that mental illness is a mental health crisis in our nation. A hundred and fifty thousand people in South Carolina have severe mental illness, eighty-seven percent of those are unemployed, nine percent of suicides involve mental illness. Sheriff Lot said seventy-five percent of the people there arresting are dealing with mental illness. This is a community needs, a community issue, but we can have a community response. There's a proven cost-effective model that's at work in three hundred and forty communities around the world. There's only one of them in the state of South Carolina, and that's in Greenville, it's called Gateway. We can bring this model to the Midlands, and we ought to. People need, with mental illness, they need something beyond medication and clinical treatment, they need to be treated like a person, they need, every life is important, they need dignity and respect and love, they need to be valued and needed, and that's what this model does, it's not a medical model, it meets the relational and the personal needs that they have. It fills a gap that's out there, it doesn't replace what mental health program is right there, it fills a gap that is out there. There's a Richland County family that had to take their son all the way to Greenville, get a hotel room for two months to get their son who had schizophrenia, who was schizophrenic, into that program. I am encouraging us as a citizen, as a community, if we work together, we can bring that to the Midlands so that people have that. if we work together, we can bring that to the Midlands so that people have that option to help their, help people with mental illness. So thank you very much. Thank you for what you do for our community and for your great work.
Thank you. Next is Lovey Blueford. Lovey Blueford.
Good afternoon. My name is Lovey Blueford, and I reside on Cherokee Street, Columbia. I'm a constituent of Richland County District Four. I attended the meeting for ARPA grantees because I wanted to know more about how the organization receiving this funding would be better able to help residents like myself. I'm a senior with multiple needs, including housing repair issues. I want to remind you that we are in dire need and waiting for assistance. There's a lot of groups out there that claim to help, but when I reach out to them, I don't get even a return call. And I noticed that on the news or somewhere, they've already designated one 501(c). So I don't know, hopefully there's others out there, too. So I ask you to make this funding available to those who are hit the hardest. Don't delay the help any longer than absolutely necessary. And make sure the funding goes to groups that are down here trying to help us and not help themselves or help their relatives and friends. Let's be honest. Let's show equality across the board. You should be mandated to return all calls from, to, to people who make the effort to call you because they're interested in finding out the process so they can get their application in. Don't just call back. Some people call back everybody. Secondly, I'm in opposition to our tax dollars going to gun manufacturing companies. Too many are getting in the hands of children and adults who have no regard for life.
Ma'am, that's your two minutes. Thank you.
Okay.
Next is Naomi Killiard.
Good afternoon. I'm, I'm here also in reference to the gun control. I have had all kinds of literature coming to my address. I'm also a resident of Columbia, South Carolina. And they've asked me to be in contact with the heads of South Carolina, which is you all, to let you all know that the guns that is killing people, killing children, and we are trying to get enough of people involved in South Carolina that will fight against these people who are selling guns, making money off of them, and not thinking about what is doing to the people here. There is no killings going on than ever has been seen. We must do something about it. Our families, our children, all are involved in this deadly thing that we have going. No one seems to care. No one wants to do anything but just say, it's all right. We're gonna get things, you know, done about it, and nothing ever happens. And it's getting worse and worse. That's all I have to say at this present time. And I thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Reverend, excuse me, Reverend Caitlin Keith.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mother Caitlin Keith. I'm one of the priests at St. Martin's in the Fields Episcopal Church on Clemson Avenue in Forest Acres, located in District Six. My husband and I currently live in District Three. I am proud to be a representative of More Justice, and I'm going to ask everyone from More Justice here to stand with me as I speak for and with hundreds of community members. We are 27 diverse congregations in the Midlands with a mission to do justice as our scriptures command. As individual congregations, myself included, we spend thousands of dollars and thousands of hours every single year helping people in need. Speaking just for St. Martin's, we participate in disaster response, a community garden that feeds through mutual aid Midlands, immigration and refugee resettlement in our city, family promise homelessness ministry. We have a backpack program, and we do so much more. And I'm tired. More Justice was founded by clergy and layfolk to fill a gap that we alone cannot get to the root of these community problems. So we work together to press for long-term solutions to these with our local officials. In a sense, the work we do is a democracy in its truest form because it's where the people are asking our representatives for change while we are doing the boots-on-the-ground work every single day. When my family moved to Richland County a few years ago, we went through a painstaking process to find a place to live that we could afford, that was safe, and that was close to work. I was a new clergy person on a new clergy person's salary, and my husband was a student. Our parish is also made up of many school teachers, and none of them can rent close to their school unless they have a dual income. We have people who come to the church every week needing emergency assistance, but our discretionary funds can only go so far. Last week, a father of four came into us minutes from getting evicted, and he just wanted to feed his kids that night. We raided our backpack closet to do so. We've been asking county council to prioritize a long-term solution to the housing crisis for nearly five years now. And today, we are asking you to show up on Monday for the More Justice Nehemiah Action. Thank you. I look forward to seeing you all there.
Next is Reverend James Woodley.
Good evening. I reside at 17 Varsity Lane in Blythewood. My name is James Woodley, and I pastor the Gill Creek Baptist Church, which is located in District Three. I live in District Seven. I am on the More Justice Executive Board, and I invite my More Justice colleagues to remain standing as they are. My church participates in many ministries to help people in immediate need, and we have people who come and ask for help all the time to pay for gas, rent, utility bills, et cetera. A lot of this comes down to people not being able to afford where they live. Our first More Justice Nehemiah Action Assembly was in 2018, where over 1,300 people from the Midlands came together to ask for specific steps from our local officials. This is our sixth year of bringing the community together in the largest local grassroots gathering each year in Richland County. Some of you have made it to, evaded a priority to be at the Nehemiah Action every year. And we celebrate and thank you for prioritizing directly addressing your constituents. Some of you have not yet to attend, and we invite you to be with us. It is time. We elected you to be voices for the people, and the people want to see each of you at the More Justice Nehemiah Action on this Monday coming, March 27, at 6:30 PM at the Township Auditorium. We're here to deliver hundreds of cards signed by constituents that want to see you at the Nehemiah Action. We sent you the questions that we plan to ask each of you on this Monday. And whether you say yes or no, your constituents deserve to hear it from you directly. If you absolutely cannot attend, we invite you to send a proxy who can answer on your behalf. The idea of building projects and new businesses that will infuse jobs into Richland County is exciting. At the end of the day, those people need a place to live, and all of the people who support that kind of growth need a place to live. School teachers, police officers, firefighters, social workers, nurses, et cetera. That's on the top of the people already. We look forward to seeing you there on Monday. Thank you so much. We leave this with you.
Next is James McCall.
Good evening. My name is James McCall. I am a local college administrator, and I'm have the privilege, privilege to share with the council and the community about Ramserv, which stands for Renewal Around the Midlands. I have two things I want to share quickly. First, I want to say to the county council, we thank you so much for your support, and we thank you for everything that y'all have done thus far to help us with Ramserv. On, but we would just wanted to remind everyone, on April 5, students from five different colleges, all the high schools in Richland One, Richland County Sheriff's Office, the City of Columbia, Keeping the Midlands Beautiful, Homeworks of America, and a ton of other organizations are gathering. And at Benedict College, we're going out to serve our community. And this, I came today to just invite the county council members who can on April 5 to join us as we go out and serve our community. Second, I want to simply invite those who are in the community also who are interested. This is going to be an exciting day. Last year, we had over 50 projects. We had over 1,700 people serving around the Midlands. And this year, we're, we're going to have more. And this is just a simple, simple invitation. This is a simple thank you for everything that y'all have done, and a simple invitation for those who would be interested to come and help serve with us on April 5 at 10 AM at Benedict College. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Tom Amara. Sorry. Kind of all ran together there at the end.
Once again, my name is Tom Amaro. I'm with the Richland County Sheriff's Department. My business address is 5623 Two Notch Road. And once again, I appreciate it for the time you have today, because I, you know, you've had a long day today. Appreciate the people in the gallery here today, especially you helping our community out here. I say bravo for what you do. In addition to what we're doing, we're collaborating with CIU, Alan Beunig, and also Columbia College. Our goal with the Sheriff's Department, I'm over Project Hope, which stands for Helping Our Precious Elderly. And once again, I also thank Gretchen and other members of the county council for their interest in helping us to help our community. In fact, just prior to my talking to you, Ms. Blueford, I'm aware of her, she had several different problems, including, I think she had a problem behind her house with the sewer, something to that effect here recently. And in fact, that's why we're here today. We're going to have, we're going to meet with her tomorrow, and that's one of our projects to help her. It's sort of like, you know, they say how God works a mysterious way. Well, tonight is a perfect example of that. And like I said, we were very fortunate. And once again, it's a wonderful opportunity to help our community, not only for people who sometimes, once again, we have people in our community who are proud. They don't want to ask for help. And like I said, we want to make sure that we can extend our hand and help them. Once again, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all the individuals who have signed up to speak this evening.
Madam Vice Chair, next item on the agenda is item 11, Report of the County Administrator. Mr. Brown, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Beginning with item A1, I will continue with the negotiation process under item 11A2. I know that from time to time, we have talked about being the recipients, or you have the recipients of a lot of large pieces of documents, getting the presentation, and then not having time to really go through that and then coming out with more questions than answers. So what you have in your packet is just is information so that you can kind of get an idea of what we want to share with you. So if you have questions along the way, you have an opportunity to reach out to.
My apologies. Can you wait one second until the gallery clears?
Thank you, Ms. English. Director Ruble, if you don't mind, closing the door, please. I have to give your staff directors, Mr. Brown. Would have sent that in an email, but and CC'd you on it. Thank you, Director Ruble. Continue on, Mr. Brown.
So in reference to item 11A2, again, just briefly, I know that many times you all receive a lot of information. And we've talked about over different meetings that sometimes it's tough to go through a long presentation, and you come out sometimes with more questions than you have answers. So the, the information that you have right now is prepared to give you insight as to some of the things that will be coming before you so that you have an opportunity to, if you have questions, but even before it's ever presented, to provide information to me and my staff about how we can better assist you in this process. And so really, that's all for information, and there's no request tonight other than to ask you to try to familiarize yourself with that at your leisure. And we'll be bringing that back before you at a future time. So that's what that item is about. Under.
Chair, I'm sorry. Brenham?
If, if the director is finished with that item, I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege, if I could.
I'm finished with that item. Yes, sir.
You recognize, Mr. Brenham?
Thank you. And thank you for the, for the slides. Thank you to the administrator and staff for preparing those slides on this important topic. I just in part want to remind my colleagues here on council that I'm uniquely positioned to, to talk with you all about the, the subject matter. Being the immediate past chairman of the Planning Commission, I sat where Chairman Walker sits now, over the last year in 2022, and shepherded through the process that, you know, council in its wisdom last spring, and also showed responsiveness to the public in restarting the mapping process and having the planning commission offer any related text amendments. I want to say that I personally spent countless hours hearing from the public, from staff, having conversations with commissioners as well. And the recommendations that we finalized were finalized on November 7, 2022, and was able to speak with Mr. Price and Planning Department earlier this week. And he showed me that the minutes are prepared from that meeting and that they should soon be adopted by the Planning Commission. So those, those minutes are usually verbatim, and it'll be just a written official reference of the recommendations that the Planning Commission made. I just will preemptively say that I'm strongly in support of each of those recommendations and the map that the commission prepared. I'm here for a resource to you guys, my colleagues, to the public. I've been elected to county council. I'm not going away on the topic. I'm still committed to remaining engaged in this phase of the county's messaging and the public engagement as well. What I, what I would hope is that we can accomplish something that is minimally disruptive and demonstrates transparency when it comes to county's property owners and our communities. We have had lots of stops, starts, and delays along the way. It is my belief that this council really wants to, you know, get it right and do it in a way that the community feels like the council is responding to it. And so I'm here to continuing that work and just committed to helping finish strong. Thank you.
Mr. Brenham, I would agree that you are uniquely positioned based on your past position as chair of the Richland County Planning Commission. But I would also tell you that you just put yourself in the hot seat by designating, you know, crowning yourself as the point person for council, you know, for, for the LDC. But yeah, absolutely, and certainly appreciate the experience that you are bringing to the, to this body, especially with, with respect to this particular item.
Mr. Chair, I spent the last year plus on it. So I got to do something with this information that I have in my head.
This new, you recognize, ma'am.
Thank you. And let it be clear that I do not want to, to vie for his self-appointed role as, as a liaison. But I do want to thank staff for, for all of the work that they've done. And I guess I want to just reassure constituents that, you know, as Mr. Brenham was saying, we're committed to getting this right and, and getting input. But just to affirm that we are going to be continuing to reach out to the community about this. There are some dates for upcoming meetings, and I will confess that I think I missed an email. So one of them slipped up on me sooner than, than I was anticipating. But this is not a process where, um, you see the meetings on these dates, and it, it means there won't be others. I know that each of us is committed to reaching out. I can just about guarantee that there will be many meetings in my area. Hi, I see one of my constituents here. Um, so just again, thank you for this process. But again, that there will be a lot of opportunities for our citizens to receive information and to ask questions. And I appreciate you outlining the beginning of this process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Um, Mr. Brown, can you may continue on?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The, the next item, uh, listed under Administrator's nomination. Uh, this item is a time-sensitive item. The county has the ability to have access to home ARP funds in the amount of $2,696,000, uh, eight hundred, excuse me, $2,696,855. Uh, but in order to do that, we have to meet the deadline. So what I'm asking for tonight, uh, is for, uh, the council to approve, uh, us to submit the home ARP allocation plan to HUD, uh, so that we can meet their March 31st deadline. So that is a request that I'm asking for. Uh, and additionally to that request, I will be asking also if council approves that for you then to, uh, reconsider that so that we can move forward with submitting that. Um, if we don't meet the deadline, then just like we, you would think, we're not able to have access to those funds. Um, and those funds, if you look in your packet, I believe, uh, roughly around page 31 kind of breaks down some of the uses, uh, of those funds. Um, and again, I don't want to belabor the point, but, uh, this is an item that we have potential access to, but we have to apply for it and meet HUD's deadline, which is March 31st. And so this would be the only time before the next time council meets for us to do any action, which is why this is under the Administrator's nomination.
Questions? I entertain a motion.
Come on, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Weaver raised his hand. You had a question?
I was going to make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, the motion's been made. It's already been moved properly. Second, any discussion?
What question?
Recognize, Ms. Newton?
Mr. Brown, do you have an idea on when you would be making awards for these?
Uh, I have, uh, both, uh, Director Harris and her team here. So Ms. Harris, if she can answer a question for you, Ms. Newton, this is our grants director. Thank you.
Recognize.
Thank you so much for having me. We do not have a proper timeline just yet, until which point that we do have the submittal to HUD. So this is actually part of a, a already approved allocation plan for our annual action plan for the CDBG department. Uh, the specific amount of funding that we are looking at, um, for an apportionment is $2,696,855. So with that specific total, uh, there are specific conditions that we have to follow in regards to that. Um, for eligibility, I don't know if you would like any, um, determinations for that, but we don't have that specific timeline outlined.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Additional questions on this item? Mr. Brown, actually, I have a question. Maybe I can ask it of you. Uh, this 2.6 million, uh, is this a one-time allocation or is this reoccurring?
It is a one-time allocation from the Home ARP Plan. So the, it's an extension of ARPA. The direct allocation went to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And they are actually proceeding with conducting this particular program, and it addresses the homeless crisis and housing crisis.
So this 2.6 million would, uh, be allocated, well, you just mentioned homelessness, but also, I guess, affordable housing as well?
Yes.
Because I know housing insecurity encompasses many things.
Uh, it is, uh, and some of the eligible activities are production and preservation of affordable rental housing. It's tenant-based rental housing, uh, supportive services, the purchase and development of non-congregate shelter, um, as well as at-risk homelessness programs. And so it's a wide range, really addressing and tackling that homeless and affordable housing crisis.
Questions on this item?
So we do have seven years on this as well for this particular program.
Seven years, and the funds have to be exhausted within seven years or committed, what have you, within, okay. All right. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver? Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, you recognize, Ms. Newton?
Move to reconsider.
Second.
Moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
There, Brenham?
No.
Pew?
Oh.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
No.
Newton. Motion fails.
And before we move to the next item, uh, Mr. Brown, just a question for you. Um, this 2.6 million, uh, this would, I guess, be uh, in conjunction with the 4 million that council has committed, I guess, toward affordable housing. Uh, you know, uh, those were from the, uh, the original, I guess, the ARPA dollars that we received previously, right?
They're a similar, uh, utilization. Uh, one is, you know, totally separate ones to what the county has done. Uh, these funds have a potential use, uh, associated with homelessness, as you mentioned. Uh, so yes, sir, that could add, uh, to the county's ability to address, uh, affordable housing within Richland County.
Oh, I think it'd be important to get the word out, uh, to the public, uh, that, you know, Richland County has certainly, uh, made a pretty robust, uh, commitment uh, to affordable housing and housing insecurity. When you combine this 2.6 million with the 4 million from the, um, you know, ARPA dollars. And I think the council that committed was a million or maybe 2 million in ARPA dollars towards homelessness as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, unhoused individuals, yes, sir.
Yeah. So it'd be important just to, you know, get that out into the community. So, you know, getting residents know that this council, uh, is certainly making a robust effort to address homelessness as well as affordable housing.
Yes, sir.
All right. I complete the Administrator's report?
There's, there's one last item. It is not listed, and it is my failure. Uh, it is also National Procurement Month, the month of March. So just want to just acknowledge, uh, the procurement personnel for the county, let them know that we appreciate their work. Uh, I, as the county administrator, I have had a lot of procurement methods that we've learned and went through. And so just thank them, uh, for what they've done, uh, to serve us as a community and as a community of, uh, council employees. So thank you, administration of procurement, so.
Mr. Brown, that sounded more like a point of personal privilege.
Uh, Mr. Chair, that could have been. So thank you all for allowing me to take that initiative. Uh, then I give back my time. How is that?
And that will conclude the Administrator's report.
Yes, sir, it does.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item 12, Report of the Clerk of Council. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. Just a reminder that on April the 1st and the 2nd, uh, there will be the Richland International Gala. It's the 28th Annual Columbia International Festival, and it will be to celebrate the rich diversity that we have in our county. So council members and the general public are welcome to attend this event, which will take place at the state fairgrounds. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is item 13, which is the Report of the Chair. The chair does not have any updates or announcements at this time, but I would like to take a point of personal privilege, uh, just to give, uh, kudos or props, you know, to, uh, Councilman, uh, Derek Pew of the Monty District 2, as well as, uh, our Economic Development Director, uh, Jeff Ruble. I believe it was, you know, not this past Monday, but two Mondays ago, a town hall was held, uh, in Life Wood around the, um, you know, would, well, was Project Connect, but, uh, Scout Motors. Uh, and it was a very, very, uh, you know, impressive turnout. It was a full house. Uh, and, you know, Councilman Pew, you know, you, uh, pretty much engaged with the constituents of Life Wood. Uh, Director Ruble also was engaged. Uh, there were very tough questions asked. Those questions were answered. I was of the, uh, under the impression that many of the concerns of residents around, uh, that project, or this project, rather, had been, uh, assuaged. And I know that it's not easy to put together a town hall, especially in such, uh, you know, in such short time. But, uh, we've managed to, to pull it off. And so again, Councilman Pew, I just want to acknowledge your leadership uh, on this particular item, as well as, um, Director Ruble. Uh, oftentimes, it's, uh, you know, the public, they wonder, um, what it is that we're doing as elected officials. Sometimes they wonder if we're operating with transparency, if we are accessible. Uh, and I can tell you that with, uh, this particular item, it's been a very transparent process. Uh, that this body, as well as our staff, has been very accessible. And again, I just want to, you know, commend, uh, your leadership on this Councilman Pew, as well as, uh, the efforts of Director Ruble and the team, uh, the economic development team here in Richland County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next item on the, uh, agenda is item 14, Open and Close Public Hearings. It's item 14A, Authorizing the Execution Delivery of a Fee in Lua of Availarum Taxes and Incentive Agreement By and Between Richland County, South Carolina and Scout Motors, a company previously identified as Project Connect. So Davis. No, I know it wasn't him.
Don't you hear the deal?
It's the first name that popped up on. I know it wasn't him.
Okay.
Now, to provide for payment of a fee, uh, fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits, authorizing the execution delivery of a project development agreement or memorandum of understanding by Richland County, South Carolina, and other related matters. Uh, that public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Oh, Mr. Chair, no individual signed up to speak this evening.
That public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item 14B, Authorizing the Execution Delivery of Fee in Lua of Availarum Taxes and Incentive Agreement By and Between Richland County, South Carolina and Sebra Solutions LLC, a company previously identified as Project Viper, to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other related matters. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair, no individual signed up to speak.
That public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item 14C, Authorizing the Transfer of Certain Property Owned by Richland County and Located in the Pineview Industrial Park and Other Matters Related Here Too. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair, no individual.
That public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item 15, Approval of Consent Items. Item 15A, Case Number 22-038MA. Uh, the applicant is Drew Huddleston. This is a request to change the zoning designation from rural to general commercial. 2.72 acres on Hard Scrabble Road, TMS number R20300-04-17. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
You recognize, Ms. Newton?
Move to approve items 15A and B.
Moved to properly second?
Second.
All right, that's, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham? Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 16, third reading items, item 16A.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry? Um, okay, um, what just happened?
Just call if I have 16A, I'll move for approval.
Oh, I think I at least need to read it into the record. Uh, Councilman Livingston, but I certainly appreciate the preemptive vote. Yeah, don't telegraph your vote. 16A, Authorizing the Execution Delivery of a Fee in Lua of Availarum Taxes and Incentive Agreement By and Between Richland County, South Carolina and Scout Motors, Inc., a company previously identified as Project Connect, to provide for a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits, authorizing the execution delivery of a project development agreement or memorandum of understanding by Richland County, South Carolina, and other related matters. Uh, I entertain a motion. Second. Moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Question, Mr. Brown, does, um, does this item need to be reconsidered? Items 15 and 16, if you get a change.
Reconsideration, Mr. Chair. For item 16A.
Second. Moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Mr. Chair?
Recognize, Ms. Mackey?
Like to reconsider items 15A and B.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item 16B, Authorizing the Execution Delivery of a Fee in Lua of Availarum Taxes and Incentive Agreement By and Between Richland County, South Carolina and Sebra Solutions LLC, a company previously identified, you know, as Project Viper, to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other related matters. I entertain a motion.
I'm moving. Second.
Moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
There move for reconsideration?
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? And that's item 16B. All right, there'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
Oh.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Item on the agenda is item 16C, Authorizing the Transfer of Certain Property Owned by Richland County and Located in the Pineview Industrial Park and Other Matters Related Here Too. Entertain a motion.
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Moved to properly second. Any discussion? You recognize, uh, Teresa?
Uh, thank you. Uh, can we just get a, a brief reminder about this item to the extent that it is possible from, um...
Uh, this is item 16C. Is, uh, Director Rubel on, or perhaps, uh, Mr. Davenport?
I know we were moving at a clip, but I did want to remind her on this one.
We, we had a couple, a couple items. Um, this is the land transfer that's connected with CIRBA Solutions. By the way, just to put it in the record straight, it's CIRBA, C-I-R-B-A, and not Sebra, C-I-B-R-A.
What did I say, Director Ruble? Did I say CIRBA or Sebra?
Well, you, you read it correctly, but it was, it's listed in the, in the, incorrectly. So I just wanted to make that correction. But this is the land transfer that accompanies that, that fee in lieu document.
Um, thank you.
Questions or discussion on this item? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.[1702.23]
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
A motion for reconsideration?
Mr. Chair, move for reconsideration of?
All right, still second?
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
Oh.
McBride? Livingston? Terracio?
No.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item 17, Second Reading Items, 17A, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 Corridor Regional Industrial Park, jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County, the execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to a company known to the county as Project Wichita and other related matters. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Move to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Bright? Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item 17B, Authorizing the Expansion of the Boundaries of the I-77 Corridor Regional Industrial Park, jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County, the execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to a company currently identified as Project Sequino or Secuno. Other related matters. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Properly second, any discussion or questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brennan?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
I'm recusing myself due to my parent company representing the company.
Thank you. English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 17C, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of apollarym taxes and incentive agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Project Charlie Echo, to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain special source credits and other related matters. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion or questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Oh.
Terracio?
No.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
I'm recusing myself from this vote due to my parent company representing the company.
You wish to reconsider your vote, Mr. Livingston? Okay.
So, Mr. Livingston, your vote is a yes?
Yes.
Okay. English?
Yes.
Newton?
No.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 18, Report of the Economic Development Committee, rather, which will be provided by the Honorable Paul Livingston. Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
Item 18A, Committing to Negotiate a Fee in Lue of Apollarym Taxes Agreement Between Richland County and Scout Motors Incorporated, a company previously identified as Project Connect, identifying the project and other matters thereof, and commits recommendations for approval.
For the recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English? Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Livingston, you're recognized.
Item 18B, Authorizing the Transfer of Certain Real Property Owned by Richland County and Located in the North Point Industrial Park to Project Obsidian and other matters related thereof. This is recommendation for approval for first reading from the committee.
For the recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
No.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That completes your report of the Economic Development Committee.
Any of these items seem to be reconsidered? Well, certainly, obviously 18B, I mean, B, not so much, but what about 18A?
Yes.
Any motion for reconsideration with respect to item 18A?
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
Oh.
McBride? Livingston?
Oh.
Terracio?
No.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Livingston, does that conclude the report of the Economic Development Committee? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 19, Report of the Rules and Appointments Committee that will be given by the Honorable Gretchen Baron. Ms. Baron, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
First on our report is the appointment of five, from five commissions or boards. The first one is for the Airport Commission, which is 19A1, and it is the recommendation of the committee to appoint 1B Frank Cagiano.
For the recommendation of the committee, any question or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.[1321.34]